Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We are going to start with prayers, pledge, and prayer. And I will do the prayer and also the pledge. Those that would like to participate, please do so. Tonight, I send a special prayers for Joe Stevens, who was our second African-American male mayor in the city of Saginaw. Condolences go out to his family from all of us, as well as the city. Most gracious ever to Father, we come to you this evening with humble hearts, bowing down, asking you to strengthen us as we make these crucial decisions from this table. It's a new season, it's a new day. Fresh anointing is coming our way. Father, we ask that you protect our leaders within the city, all of our workers, our citizens, and for those who want to come to Saginaw to live. Father, we know that you're able, and we ask these things in the mighty name of Jesus, and they all said amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to say good evening. This is a public meeting, and the audience is asked to remain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. A friendly housekeeping reminder for all of the council persons. My phone is still in repair, so I need all those phones put on silence so that they don't go off. You notice everybody went to move to change their phones. Audience, I'm asking that you do the same thing. That's some of your papers. Madam Clerk, can I get roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
April Tembaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache is pre-excused. Councilmember Flores.
Member Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
Present and one excuse, Mayor.
Any announcements?
Yes, I do have one to start off tonight. I want to remind everyone and city council in particular that the March 21st city council meeting was scheduled to begin at noon, 12 o'clock noon, and that's because it was the Student Government Day. However, due to COVID cases and out of an abundance of caution, Student Government Day has been canceled. Therefore, the council meeting will begin at its regular time of 6:30 PM on March 22nd, March 21st. And Mayor, that takes us to a proclamation recognizing February 2022 as Black History Month.
In observance to the Black History Month, City Council has prepared a proclamation, and Mayor Pro Tem Michael Balls will read it.
Thank you. City of Saginaw, proclamation. Where is Black History Month was created by Carter G. Woodson in 1926 to highlight the vast endeavors and accomplishments of African-Americans that have impacted our nation's history and identity. And where is, in this national celebration, we applaud the transformational contributions of the African-American community, which has overcome tremendous adversity to build a lasting change for generations to come. And where is, the city of Saginaw is proud to honor African-Americans who have helped to shape and transform our city, including lumber barons William Atwood, physician Dr. Elche Eric Clarder, former mayor Henry D. March, educator Ruben Daniels, and former UAW president and airport commissioners Harry Brown, and countless others who contributed our worth into the fabric of our city. And where is, in our city recognition of Black History Month, we reflect on the great strides that we have made to ensure freedom for all people, regardless of race, color, creed, in the pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness, and we recognize that our work must continue. Now therefore be resolved, I Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim February 2022 as Black History Month. And the city of Saginaw encourages all residents to honor black history and culture in our city and continue the efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. It is witness, therefore, I have undue set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed in the seventh day of February in the year of our Lord 2022. This has Brenda F. Moore, Mayor, councilperson Michael Balls, Mayor Pro Tem, Annie Bench, George Copeland, Michael Flores, Marleke Lamar Sylvia, Bill Osterst, Autumn Swerzer, and William Reggie Williams II, and Timothy Morales, the city manager.
Thank you. We will make sure that that proclamation gets to the necessary person that needs to have it. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, you are now at public input.
The purpose of the, the purpose, I'm sorry. Welcome to those who have signed up to address council tonight. Please speak slowly so we clearly can understand that we don't miss anything that you say. You'll be allotted three minutes. The clerk will time you, at which time she will let you know when your time is up. We will remind, we will remain courteous and respectful to the members of the public and to those watching on SGTV and to the council, so that so that we can give you serious considerations on what you'll be asking of. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker tonight is Shaverna Butterfield. Shaverna Butterfield. One coming forward. Next, let's go to Julian Morris. And counsel, he did provide a handout. It's at your place.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
To Mayor Moore, Mayor Pro Tem Balls, and the distinguished city council. My name is Julian Morris, and I'm the owner and chief editor of Swag Magazine. Today, I stand here with my team, Michael, Michaela, Miles, Myron, and Carley. Being a teen entrepreneur isn't easy, and doing something new is scary. But the support of our community in this council has made our journey a bit easier. All of the city has encouraged us and shown up at some event or we're a part of, and for that, we thank you. I want to give a special thank you to councilmember Copeland, Flores, Balls, and Williams. We always see women in our community supporting kids, but as a young man in Saginaw, it means a lot to me to have the support of men in leadership in our, in my community. Many of you are subscribers or have purchased Swag gear, and that means a lot to me. You guys have shown me what it looks like to see men supporting young men and being mentors, either up close or from a distance. And again, I thank you. A lot of teen entrepreneurs have stepped out on faith this last year. Kaylin with her popcorn, the Three Amigos doing lawn care, and Sweet Lips by Jazz encouraging young girls to have high self-esteem, and many others. The city's website says, "This is Saginaw. We build opportunity." I ask that this council remember kids like us as they plan this city's future and make room for us to build opportunities for ourselves and our peers. The ARPA funding is an amazing opportunity to do great things in our city. Make sure young people are included in those opportunities. We are the future, but we are here right now, and we can contribute to our community right now. Again, I thank this council for their support, and as a token of our appreciation, we present all of you with the first print edition of Swag Magazine, celebrating our one-year anniversary. We are available to autograph these for you as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want mine signed, so please stay around. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is April Williams.
Good afternoon, city council, mayor, audience. Giving is receiving. Blessed are the giver, receiver, and witness of a kind act. Florence Event Hall will participate in spreading kindness within the community and become a part of a solution to create, I'm sorry, to create a healthier and happier community. Everything you do has an impact, even standing still and doing nothing still has an impact on something or someone. I am standing here before the city council today to ask for some help with Florence Event Hall so I can be a pillar in the community. Well, Florence Event Hall can be a pillar in the community and help as well and build the community up, just like the little guys that were just speaking. I do want to be someone that can help the youth because they are our future. So with that being said, I am looking, I am standing here and asking for some help with being that pillar of the community. Thanks, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Henry Hill.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Mayor Moore, city council members, audience. I'm the founder of a Hill Second Chance Organization. Also, I'm a big advocate on domestic violence. A week ago, I seen a young lady, seen the young lady, and her face was bruised up, and she had a black eye. And I asked her what happened. She said her and her baby daddy got into a fight. I said, "What y'all get in a fight for?" She said, "Well, I busted his window out." I said, "Okay." So that constitute him putting his hands on you. You don't deserve to be a man's punching bag. And she said, "I agree." I said, "How can you agree? You still in the dangerous, toxic relationship." I said, "Nevertheless, as a young lady, know your value." And I took this very personal because the first few years I come on, I was in a very violent relationship. Were you, you city council members, at? I sat and watched my own vehicle get vandalized by a woman. She cut, stabbed three of my tires, broke my windshield wipers, and I just looked, and I walked away from the situation. And with that being said, I got several calls from some of my friends asking me, "What you gonna do about the situation?" I said, "What you mean, what I'm gonna do about the situation?" They said, "I would beat her down if she did my car like that." I said, "Bro, you guys out here idolizing cars, material things, and it's not worth it. I'm not going to jail or prison for a car or the material thing." So I had my car pulled the next morning. Take it to the garbage boy, get the windshield wipers fixed. It was broke on it. Looked down on my feet, my shoes cut up. I said, "Oh, my goodness." So I opened up the trunk, raised a red flag, opened up the trunk. All my clothes packed in the trunk and totes, bags, and everything, all cut up, shoes and everything. And my point being is so many brothers, young men, as well as a man, would react in a violent way to something like that. We need to get prevention programs in our community to educate our young brothers and sisters that this is not acceptable, a man putting his hands on you. A man's supposed to take care of you. He's supposed to love you. He's supposed to protect you, not beat up on you. And, and the Bible clarity says that when you was a child, you spoke as a child, you understood as a child. When you become a man, you put away childish thing. As a man, I take responsibility because I caused this situation. I could have acted a fool, but no. I took the smart approach and walked away from the situation. But a lot of brothers, young mans out here, would not walk away from the situation because they idolizing cars and material things. In closing, I'd just like to thank y'all for y'all's time, and hopefully we can continue to come together. That's that for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Audrey Beatty. I didn't see her earlier. Audrey? Okay, Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
Councilmembers, you have three minutes as well to speak. Please get your points across as well. We will begin tonight with Monique Lamar Sylvia.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to say happy, let me see what, Black History Month, Happy Valentine's Day, and anything else that comes up before we see each other again. But I really appreciate all the speakers. Everything you said was really touch, touch home or either I've seen it, witnessed it in some way. Congratulations to you, young men. Thank you, Mr. Hill, for speaking on young men. Thank you, Ms. Williams, for talking about being better in the community. We can all do that, you know. One small thing I do and one small thing you do, we can all bring it together, and it can become something great. So thank you all very much, and have a blessed rest of the day.
Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I want to mention tonight, I want to mention that Tuesday, March 1st, Front Port Roll Call, Saginaw Police Department will be hosting at the Court Street Theater. I would encourage everyone to attend. Go out, Front Port Roll Calls are great events, a chance for you to get to meet members of the police department and to have that positive interaction and to learn about not just the police department in some aspects, but also your community. I would also like to say thank you to Mr. Morris and his team for coming to council tonight. This is, this is outstanding. I don't think everyone in the audience has one, but I'm glad I do. But this is very impressive, and it smells wonderful. I love this smell. But it's, it's impressive, and everything that you all have been doing has been impressive. It is nothing short, really, of excellence, especially for our community. And I would encourage you to continue. If there's anything that you need from me personally, from whatever hat I wear, I am there for you guys. And I'm looking forward to the events that you continue to put on, especially the fashion show. So please continue to do what you are doing, and thank you for doing what it is you are doing. And with that, I conclude.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Bench.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I too want to thank our public speakers and in particular congratulate Mr. Morris and his team for their one-year anniversary. I think my kids are probably give or take your age, and I've pointed to you guys as an inspiration for, you know, some of their little ideas that they have at home too. But it's, it's really impressive to see what you guys are doing. And I want to, you know, encourage you to keep it up. I want to commend our mayor on the wonderful job she did delivering our State of the City address last Thursday for the monthly perk meeting, very bright and early. But she did a wonderful job representing the city of Saginaw, as she always does, and I'm just very proud to hear her speak. Wanted to mention too, encourage everybody to get over to the Saginaw Art Museum between now and I believe mid-April, I want to say April 16th, to see the Black Hand Side exhibit. It is incredible, and it's put together by local artists. Their hours are Wednesday through Friday. I think there's a Saturday that they have coming up where you are allowed to meet the artists and have a discussion there. But Wednesday through Friday, noon to 5:00 PM over at the Saginaw Art Museum, it's definitely worth taking the time to go and look at it and take, take some time, like a couple hours, because it's a lot to take in, and it's, it's amazing. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too want to say hello to everybody and thank our public speakers. Julian, you are an inspiration, and it is not often that a, someone your age, I won't call you a child, is an entrepreneur, but also a visionary. So keep it up because those, you don't learn those. They come naturally. So congratulations to you on your one-year anniversary. I want to also congratulate Officer of the Month, Detective Catherine Mercer from the Saginaw Police Department. Another congratulation goes out to Eileen Peniger. She retired. I'm so sad. However, she served the city for 25 years, and I had the honor to celebrate her retirement last Thursday.
In the snow.
In the snow. I showed up. But Eileen, you are Saginaw Superwoman, and you will be missed. But best wishes to you on your next endeavor. Also, Mexican-American Council's art activity is coming up on February 21st at 4:00 PM, so check it out. If you have a chance, bring your family. And then last but not least, Stemmons, Faithful, Goings, Watts, and Neil. If you don't know who they are, Google it. But that is a part of Black History since 1920. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor.
Google it.
Next, we have Michael, Mr. Councilman.
Thank you. Happy Black History Month to everybody. First, Kanda has their 10th Annual Primus Awards. It's going to be Saturday, March 5th, at the Horizon Center. If you need tickets, go to Maria's Mexican Restaurant or call 989-332-1107. To Mr. Morris, thank you so much for coming and giving us this. It does smell good. I didn't smell it until Councilman Williams told me to, but it smells great. But we have some proclamation requests for you. I'm not sure if it's going to be done next week or the, or the next meeting, but we really appreciate what you're doing. You cannot spell Saginaw without swag, so keep that in mind. And then also, for Black History Month, it's been a pleasure for a year to be on council with so many great black leaders in the city of Saginaw and to watch them do what they do. Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia, you are a person of the people, and I admire you greatly. Councilmember Williams, I'm not sure if people know this, but we meet for coffee, or we have it a couple times. And anything that he tells me in private, he will tell me in public. And I honor and respect a man like that greatly. And Mayor Pro Tem Balls calls me when he wants something. It's only when he wants something for the community. Food drives, giving to people that are less fortunate. He's always been somebody that has called me to, to serve and kind of guided that way. He told me to wear something black today, so I got a black tie. But when he meant that, I didn't understand fully, obviously. Mayor Moore, you are also amazing and a great State of the City speech, but also thank you so much for this past year and your leadership. And Councilman Copeland, everyone loves you. I'm not, when we were running, my mom's like, "Oh, I love that Copeland guy." I was like, "Yeah, well, he's just full of heart. He's a beautiful person. He has a beautiful family, and he enriches Saginaw in so many different ways." And so I'm honored to be on this council with so many strong black leaders. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, Happy Monday. I want to first start off by saying thank you to everyone, our guest speakers. It's just, I just enjoy hearing you all. Thank you for continuing to come. Mr. Morris, I can't even, I get choked up when I talk about him just because it just, I think it speaks to the heart of Saginaw and how no matter what we will see going on in the media, when the city of Saginaw comes together for the next generation, they're going to come hard. And we have seen for a year the community supporting this young, not only just this young man. I mean, if we see some of the youth symposiums for young entrepreneurs that's been going on in our city, we've been doing it, and I'm so happy to see that it's been consistent. It's easy to think, see things start, but this has been consistent for a year. So I'm looking forward just to what's going to come in the future. I do want to say, let everyone know this weekend, if you're looking for something to do with your family, Pitt and Balcony has a show called Guess Who's Coming to Dinner going on this weekend, so take some time if you're into the theatrics. We got it going on in our city right here. Also, Sarah dollars are still available. I don't know if you've checked your consumer's bill, but consumers is food, all right? So if you need a little help, please call, find, get the Sarah information because there are dollars still available to assist our community. Also, I do want to give honor and reverence to my brother, the honorable Joe Stevens. My condolences are with his family. And just remembering the history. Our second African-American mayor of this great city and also served in our police department during one of the most, we don't talk about it a lot, but this is one of the most pivotal times in the history of our city, and he was serving our city. And he's even been able to serve in the city council. And even though he served for a mayor for two years, it was a powerful, his impact in the city of Saginaw is powerful. His services are this Saturday, this Saturday at Evans and Brown's at 11:00 AM. So even if you can't make it, just take a moment of silence just to honor the history of this great man. And as I end, I want to end with two things. A quote from Mrs. Coretta Scott King. "It doesn't matter how strong your opinions are, if you don't use your power for positive change, you are indeed part of the problem." And to end, I want to end with eight powerful words for the year that I just got from this great book right here. Number one, believe in yourself. Two, stay strong. Three, never give up. Four, be grateful. Five, work hard. Six, stay humble. Seven, be kind. And eight, keep smiling. You all have a great evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to congratulate Mr. Morris and his team for a well-written, thought-of magazine. This is beautiful. Never in my imagination would I have think, probably started off at 12 years old thinking about doing a magazine. You guys are doing a great job. And I'm sure this is going to encourage another kid in the city of Saginaw to do great things like you're doing. Continue to do the good work. I too was at the fashion show that you put on last year and was able to support it through Wine and Gas Credit Union helping out, and it was amazing. I took my, I want to say great-grandkids and, I want to say grandkids, but they're my great-grandkids. But they had a marvelous time, a five-year-old and an eight-year-old. Man, they was amazed at that fashion show. My great-granddaughter is looking forward. She says she want to be a model next year. So you guys are inspiring people already to do great things, so continue to do the good work. I too used to be a neighbor of Mrs. Stevens back in the day, and he was, he was like a mentor to all the young guys in the community. Always told us to do the right thing. You know, if he's walking by the street or if some of our friends are trying to talk to his daughters, he kept us on the straight and narrow. And, you know, we, we need to have more men like that in our community to look out for the young guys and tell them to do the right thing. And that's one of the reasons I've been involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters so long because of people like him was in my life. You know, we need mentors in this community to make sure that our young males are trying their best to do the right thing. You know, a young guy that's beating up on a woman probably saw his father beat up on somebody or somebody like that. So we need to have good, strong role models in our community. So keep doing the good work, Mr. Hill. You know, I remember before I knew anything about Black History Month, I used to think that maybe somebody gave us this, and I was kind of teed off as I said, it's the coldest damn month in the year. It's the shortest month, so I assumed that somebody allowed us to have that month for Black History Month. Well, later on, after getting older and a little wise, I kind of find out that Abraham Lincoln's birthday is in February and Frederick Douglass's birthday is in February. That's why Mr. Woodson picked that particular week for their birthdays. They're like two days apart. And then down in Kent State University, those guys espoused it to a month, and that's how it ended up being a whole month today. So sometimes you got to keep your mouth shut and has to read a little bit. Maybe you can find some things out in this world. The tease thinking somebody else is the one that done it. So I'm glad that I did find that out. But I'd like everyone to remember that African-Americans have done a lot for this country. They helped build, they built Washington DC and a whole lot of things with their slave labor. Just imagining 300 years of free labor, 300 years. Just imagine it. Thank you.
Last but not least, first of all, let me thank all of our public speakers. Julian, you're awesome. It is time for us to allow our youth to step up. It is time for us to take a look at how we represent doing what we're doing in this community as well. It is, it saddened me, the death of Joe Stevens because not only was he the second African-American mayor, he was also the second Michigan Municipal League Black President. All of this I found out in a matter of 48 hours. Can you imagine? 50 years ago, we had a riot in this city that tore it up. He stepped out on faith. He was a police officer. He stepped out. So for his family, my heart goes out to you, and I say thank you for sharing him with us. For his wisdom and his leadership, we have moved further. We are going further and further and closer and closer to where we need to get. My other public speakers, it goes without saying. It's redundant for me to say it, but I thank you. If you all don't talk, we don't know. I said it in my speech, when Saginaw was up against its greatest challenge, we didn't waver. We stood together, locked arms, and we moved forward. I want to thank everybody again for attending, watching, looking, and even having a love. Like I said, dream with me. I'm a dreamer. And dreams become reality. If you say it out loud, it will come into existence. And Saginaw is in a new season. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at reports from the city manager.
Thank you, and as Councilman Scherzer did mention, Detective Catherine Mercer has been selected as the city's department February Officer of the Month. Detective Mercer meets challenges head-on and consistently goes extra mile when working assigned cases, utilizing available resources and efforts to ensure victims of crime, as well as their families are able to get the assistance and attention they deserve. Congratulations to Detective Mercer. And I also wanted to mention that, that's in the Saginaw Police Department newsletter, they also are giving statistics for the Victim Services Unit. So in January alone, the Victim Services Unit worked with 146 victims. The majority of the victims assisted were female, 103, ages 25 to 59, and victims of domestic or family violence. So BSU is staffed with a Victim Services Unit Coordinator, a full-time and part-time victim advocate. Those positions are, I think, primarily grant-funded. So I think with a lot of the discussion we've had from at the podium in the council tonight, I know Chief is working on possibilities to make those positions more permanent so that they can continue to serve people. Prior to that, I believe the officers did all of the Victim Services Unit-type work before that. So I think that's a good unit we have at the police department. It's worth looking at, making sure we have that permanent. A second item that I did want to focus on tonight is something that the mayor had in her speech. So the city of Saginaw formed a marketing team while proceeding through the redevelopment-ready community process. If you recall, the This Is Saginaw: We Build was a promotion that was actually the brainchild of the late Mayor Greg Branch, and he worked on that with our staff. We do have limited staff, so in typical fashion, the committee was formed from a variety of departments. I just wanted to recognize those individuals and the departments that they are from. The team is made up of Vicky Davis, who's in the city manager's office, Rachel Hoseeska, the city manager's office, Yolanda Jones, Office of Management and Budget, Jeff Klopsick, Director of Technical Services, Calvin Murphy, Technical Services, Matt Shitnick, SGTV Program Coordinator, Keisha Smith, SEDC, Cassie Zimmerman, Saginaw Future, and our one actual marketing media person is Phil Ike from Full Steam Media. The marketing team meets once a month to discuss marketing strategies for the city. Agenda topics include planning, social media, story ideas, and marketing strategies for upcoming events and activities in the city. So one of the recent projects that they did, you'll see on the screen, is the Saginaw decal. The decal is a creative effort of Calvin Murphy, who is our Enterprise Analyst in Technical Services. And for, if you're not familiar with that, that's our individual who works with our S&amp;A software. So he's not, he's not a graphic designer for the city. This was an extra project. Calvin presented the original rendering of the logo to the marketing team earlier in the fall of 2021. Team worked together on each piece of the decal to ensure it would highlight our history and include many of the key landmarks that are unique to Saginaw. After receiving input from the entire team, Calvin worked with Matt Shitnick to perfect the details in the logo. So that is the logo, and it is also a sticker that's available in the manager's office. And I think the marketing team had a great idea. They would like to place these at various businesses in the city so that if you want to pick one up, you can go to the business and frequent the business and get one there. So I'm sure they'll be putting those out. And I did get some of the items in there from the marketing team that are specific to Saginaw history, but I think they're thinking about having a contest, so I don't want to mention what they are. I think that's still in the works. And a five-by-five decal is weatherproof and can be displayed on any surface, including the vehicle or storefront window. And the logo is available now at City Hall Manager's Office and will be at local businesses throughout Saginaw. Also, in the mayor's speech, he did talk about a video program that we're going to have. The city of Saginaw originally partnered with Abreu Creative and Scott &amp; Miller Group to produce a single video that would highlight the great things happening throughout Saginaw. Our goal was to re-energize and inspire residents about the uniqueness of our city and continue to reflect every person, both near and far, the great things happening in Saginaw. But as they worked through the process, they realized one video wasn't enough to represent people, progress, and momentum that is taking place. So they will have nine stories featuring nine individuals who care about the city and are taking action and making a difference. The trailer for this series was released on Thursday during the mayor's state-of-the-city address. And beginning today, we launch a new video each week on the city of Saginaw's Facebook page, the website, and the city's YouTube channel. We encourage residents to tune in every Monday morning at 7:00 a.m. to see those unique stories of individuals who are passionate about Saginaw. So I want to congratulate the work that the marketing team is doing. It's something, as usual, additional that all of these employees have taken on, and I think they've done a great job with what they're doing. With that, I think we have a few of the videos to share.
This is Saginaw. She is Saginaw. He is Saginaw. Each with a story to tell, and each with a story yet to be told. And at the center of every story is the heart of the people who love their city. A city of culture and diversity, a city that cares for each other and our planet. A city of people that band together despite differences to work, to create, to explore, to innovate, to play. But most of all, to build something better. Better opportunities, better communities, better stories. These are theirs.
During medical school, I was on OB-GYN, and within five minutes of being on the floor, I was pulled into a delivery, and it was really beautiful. I was happy to be a part of such a wonderful experience in someone's life. Because of that, I think that OB-GYN found me. I didn't necessarily find my calling. OB-GYN found me. And I'm excited to explore more of the possibilities of moving forward. My name is Zenobia Oforidanqua. I'm one of the Central Michigan University OB-GYN residents. Growing up in Saginaw, my mom was a dentist here, so I always thought that I would do something in the healthcare field. As an OB-GYN, you're not only just delivering babies, but you're also a surgeon and an advocate. Sometimes you are a shoulder for someone to cry on or a sounding board. And I appreciate all of those different hats because I think it allows me to display all of my strengths. There's a lot that I want to do. I'm hoping that I can improve the community in some way. I'm hoping that my impact is improved health and happiness and well-being of not only just the city of Saginaw, but also our women through the OB-GYN program, women of color, young women. I'm just hoping to leave Saginaw better than when I found it. My mom has been a dentist in Saginaw for over 30 years, and I could tell that she was also a very big part of the community, especially the black community here. I could always see that and feel that and appreciate that from her. And so I think that's definitely translated to me wanting to make that same impact.
So eight more to go after that one. Great job.
Madam Mayor, that concludes the management update.
And then we're going to do the mayor dancing. Video number 10. Do we have any questions for the city manager? Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Manager, I appreciate the effort that you are putting into the Saginaw campaign along with your department heads. So I just wanted to vocally say thank you for doing that. I am totally off-topic, but I know it's been over a year since we approved the marijuana ordinance, and I'm just wondering if we have any data available yet? So that would include, like, number of licenses? I wouldn't say profit, but ones as well.
We can get you, there are three open, and we can get you the number of applications that are pending. And it's probably more than a dozen that have been provisionally approved by the Planning Commission. The allocation of revenue by the state of Michigan is by the number of facilities that you have that are open. There's a formula, and they multiply that by probably three. But I'm not sure what their cutoff dates are, but we can find out more about that.
Just interested in some data points from, since it's been a year.
Definitely.
Actually, a little more. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just had one with the video. I really liked that. Originally, when we approved that, it was going to be a two-to-three-minute video, and then there were going to be bite-sized videos after that. So the nine segments would be the bite-sized ones. The original video that ended up being produced was 56 seconds. So it's just going to be the additional videos. And then it was $16,000. Are they going to be asking for any additional money, or that cover the cost of production?
I defer to Yolanda since she's on the team.
The $16,000 covers the total cost of all the videos.
Okay. Great. Awesome. Good, really good. Yeah, that's all I had.
Anyone else? Moving right along. The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the website and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exception, please.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any exceptions?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Two and three.
Say it again.
Two and three.
Two and three. Is there any more? All those, any more discussion? I'm sorry. There ain't no more discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two is approve the agreement in purchase with Guide House Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $850,000 for consulting services related to funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act grant. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Okay, my question would be, I know they did a presentation. I felt good with the presentation they gave, but what I was wondering, are there any other entities besides this one? Or we just have that one to pick from? Are there any other entities that are interested in giving us an overview of what they have, or?
Well, for this broad of services, I don't know of any in Michigan that is working with as many groups. We did get another proposal from another firm, but it would be more of small pieces of work rather than the full spectrum that this firm is offering.
I move to approve consent agenda, item number two.
I apologize. I had questions after her. Were you done?
Yeah, I'm done with that. Yes, I am.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, she made the exception, so she states her exception. Now we need a motion.
And then we can go.
Right. And the motion was being made.
I move to approve consent agenda, item number two.
I'll support that.
Go for a vote.
Are you ready for discussion?
Now we're ready for discussion. Okay.
All right, thank you. After reviewing other contracts with Guide House, Saginaw currently is at 1.64% of the total ARPA funds. Royal Oak is at 1.5% with a one-year approval for a contract with the additional option for a two-year extension after each year. Oakland County is the same at 1.5%. Clinton County is actually at 1% with the one-year contract. The city of Jackson is at a one-year contract. And then it kind of goes on like that. I even looked at Oklahoma. They have a very small percentage in their contract. Would we be able to have a one-year contract with, similar to what the Royal Oak or Jackson or Oakland County have, with the ability to have options to approve additional years?
I suppose we could look at a different kind of contract. The type of work that I think they'll be doing for us, I wouldn't recommend one year with the ability to renew contract because I think for continuity purposes, we want to have Guide House working through the entire grant period.
But would they accept the same types of contracts they had with Royal Oak or Jackson or Oakland County where it would be a one-year? Because it's similar to what Flint did. They had a three-year contract, which we currently have, and then they moved it to do a one-year, just to see what the work looked like. There's some clauses in the contract currently that...
We have an out clause in every contract we have. So if it were a year or less than a year, we could terminate the contract if we didn't feel that we were getting the level of work that we have. There might be other reasons why they have a one-year program. I don't know what the other community's purchasing ordinances say. I don't know what their charter says about purchases, but I'm comfortable with the way that the contract's set up.
And then the contract excludes analysts, but includes consultants. Are the analysts the people that we would need to look at the type of partnerships that are being created with Guide House's infrastructure? Or would?
They're here, so that's kind of a technical question, so I'd ask.
Yeah, if they want to come up?
He could answer that question better for you.
Hello, pleasure to be here. Yeah, so that would be our kind of baseline, you know, junior consultant, analyst, all kind of interchangeable title, but, you know, kind of the support staff, if you will.
Okay, so the consultant gets $150 an hour for the first year, $155 the second year, $160 the third year. What I'm looking for, to the analysts, the folks that you were talking about bridging these or networking, are they the analysts that are looking at different grant programs?
Oh, I see what you're saying. We would all be looking at that. That's a real team effort. So I wouldn't say that that would necessarily be just sitting at one price point.
So there would be analysts included, but they're not included in the agreement that we have currently?
So do we, we have a consultant rate, I believe, correct, in the table, right? So that, it's an interchangeable term, is what I'm getting at. So the analyst and the consultant, it's an interchangeable term.
Okay, because you have three different analysts, recovery analysts, tier three, tier two, and tier one. So if we were to be getting the consultant for $150 an hour, really, we're kind of getting...
Apologies, let me restate as I'm seeing this visually, and it's coming back to me here. So your recovery analysts, those are people that we would bring in as support staff, and they would be, they're often subcontractors or other people we'd bring in to support the team. And according to the contract, I believe you're saying, can you point to the page you're at?
I'm looking at a page from the city of Jackson. It's page 210, but it's the same appendix that you have for our...
Okay. I don't know if I'm going to be able to.
I think that might be difficult because he's looking at a whole other city.
Right.
Oh, page 22, then.
Page 22. I can try here. Let me take a look.
But they're at the same rates.
Okay, so can you restate the question?
So a consultant, what we're looking for is for somebody to come aboard, network, look at what other communities... network, look at what other communities are doing, analyze if we're able to get additional funds, either through.
Yep.
Any CDBG or if there's any other type of infrastructure fund or, well, you talked about last meeting.
Yep. So you're saying, what would that person, what would their price be?
No, I know what the, what the price is. But currently, what we have in terms of the agreement, we have a director, a manager, a senior consultant, and a consultant. But we are, are missing all three tiers of the analysts. So what would the analysts bring to the, to the table that was listed in terms of the services that we would be missing if we were to agree to this?
I don't, I don't think it's excluding that.
It doesn't mention.
Well, the three-point-one section, resources assigned, just lists the team providing the deliverables. I, I'd assume that everybody who's listed with a rate could work on projects for Saginaw.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that's really the point of having those rates in. It allows us to bring people in at those rates. It's giving us more flexibility to bring in lower-cost people to support projects as needed.
Okay, so with resources assigned, three-point-one could be extended beyond the consultants that you listed.
Right.
But we haven't listed what the analyst names are.
Yeah, I don't have an analyst right now that I'm specifically assigning to this, specifically because they're generally plug-and-play. We bring them in as needed.
Right, okay.
Does that make sense?
So we'll always have these individuals listed by name as long as they're with Guide House, but the analysts, you probably move around even throughout the country, depending on where your need is greatest, right?
Yeah.
And they wouldn't need to travel here, right? They could work remotely?
Yeah.
Because the other part that I have is that their fees are not gonna include incidental expenses such as travel that you will invoice on a monthly basis, the actual hours worked to the city, and then pay on top of the cap of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to do invoices with travel?
Right, so depending on how many people you would, you as a team or the, the account, or the, the committee themselves would wanna see up here in person, would be what that cost would be. We'd obviously wanna make sure that that was an efficient, logical choice for the group and your budget.
And you'd be able to work remote?
Yeah.
Just come in through the internet or?
That's correct.
Zoom?
Yep.
All right. Would it be my time to make a motion, or is there a motion already?
There's a motion on the floor.
Motion is already made, and I'm getting ready to close. And ask anybody else, do you have any more comments? Hear no more comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Next.
Roll call vote, Madam, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Proton Balls.
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Yes.
Dash is absent. Councilmember Flores.
May.
Councilmember Copeland.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Bench.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We have seven yes, one nay. Your motion is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We have item number three. That is to approve the grant agreement between the Saginaw Housing Commission and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one Family Self-Sufficiency Program. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Okay, I guess I want, maybe this is more or less clarity. Um, you're the fiduciary for, uh, Saginaw Housing? How's that? Or no?
I can take this question.
Okay.
Um, the Saginaw Housing Commission used to be a part of the city, and as such, we are required, or they're required to get our approval on their grant agreements or, um, or the grants or any kind of agreements because they, we used to be a part of the city. So they require your council approval. They still, they spend their money the way that they want to, but they need your approval to move forward with HUD.
To move, okay.
Yes.
So.
We're not the fiduciary, though.
Right, okay, 'cause I was kinda confused because I didn't think they were no longer.
No, they're not.
Part of.
Right, you're correct. They're no longer a part of the city. They're a separate entity, but they require council approval.
Okay, so nothing would fall back on the city any kind of way? Because with the program in and of itself, um, if that's not being delivered or being delivered correctly, nothing to do with city saying.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's correct.
Well, I, I motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to second, any more discussion?
Sorry, who's second? Thank you.
I had two.
You're there for two hours.
So I had two.
Okay. We have a second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at boards, commission, and committee reports.
Do I have any boards or commission reports from the council table? Yes, Councilman Copeland.
I do, I have one from our housing. Uh, I serve on the housing commission, and so recently, I would encourage, um, a lot of our community, if you are interested, if you do not know what, who the Saginaw Housing Commission is, um, I would encourage you to look into that information. Um, we do have some availability here in the city. Um, so please, I would encourage you, if you need those areas of housing, to look into that. This week, I just completed part one of my narrow, um, certification, so I can be a certified commissioner for the housing commission. Um, and so I would encourage those who are interested. Our meetings are once a month on Wednesdays at four P.M. at the Saginaw Commission Office. Um, our next meeting is, I'm sorry, I just wanna pull up my calendar. It is, um, February twenty-third. February twenty-third, I would encourage you to come out. Um, that is where they, if you have questions regarding HUD, what are the changes that HUD has going on? How is that impacting the city of Saginaw and our housing commission? Um, what projects are we working on? What are some ideas that you may have? Um, I encourage you to stop by our meeting. Our next meeting will be again, uh, February twenty-third at four P.M. at the Saginaw Housing Commission Office.
Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, uh, Councilman Copeland, did you say that there are seats available on the, uh, board? Or did I misunderstand that?
Space available.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I went to my standard meetings, nothing has changed. We still begging for money. To be honest, I'm still begging. I'm still trying to get us some money so we can move forward, so. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at appointment of board and commission members. We do have one tonight, and it's to approve the council appointment of Michael Faust to the Board of Review with a term to expire December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-six.
I need a motion to approve.
I move.
It's been moved and second, any discussion? Hear no discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
We are at ordinance introduction, and there is one tonight. It's an ordinance to amend section one-five-three point four-two-six, usage and parking standards of chapter one fifty-three zoning regulations of Title XV land usage.
I need a motion.
So moved, support.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have one resolution tonight. It's concurring with provision of a brownfield plan for the Hall Block redevelopment project.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Or?
It's been moved and adopted. Any discussion?
I do, really quick. Would it be possible, and I hope I'm in order, um, regarding this, to have someone from the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority come share with us on what's going on? 'Cause I hear a lot of new projects. Hey, what's up?
Uh, and I'm not on the authority, but I do, I'm about on the authority. So, yeah. What, what's your question?
Oh, no, 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 I just want you guys to come, so, in a public setting, so more people will know what the Brownfield Authority is, just like an old.
Oh.
So, no, no, I didn't have questions, so, but I'm glad to know you're here.
Well, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but just generally speaking, um, for this project specifically, I gotta take this thing off for a second. Um, we've been working on this project for a long time. It's a, it's a block in Old Town. And the Hall family, um, they're, the, the, John Hall founded Glass Tender out in Kochville Township. They make restaurant equipment. And, um, he's got, he grew up in the city, has a heart for the city, purchased, um, some buildings on Court Street, Court and Hamilton, and, um, wanted, got inspired actually during, um, uh, the Main Street, uh, process that we went through in Old Town and wanted to develop the condos. It, it stalled for like, I don't know, maybe eight or nine years. And then we introduced, Saginaw Future reintroduced him to, um, Alex DePerry, who's done a number of projects and is really good at, at historic renovations. And so, um, Alex took over the project from a project management standpoint. And this is a good example of why we have a redevelopment authority, a Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Um, when you do projects that are, um, functionally obsolete buildings that were not intended for, in this case, residential use, um, there's a lot of additional costs. So, um, in this particular instance, they, um, had to demolish the old Stephen Van Lines building. And so the, typically, would, we would take this to the, uh, city of Saginaw's Brownfield Authority. And we did, actually, initially, until the developer changed his mind in terms of, the county has a, um, Brownfield revolving loan fund, which Yolanda and I and Lori actually, um, were kind of in charge of, of, um, reorganizing the Brownfield Authority for the city. We instituted a policy that we're gonna start capturing taxes to, to help fund our own RLF, but the county has, hmm, under a million dollars, right around a million dollars, to loan out for projects like this. So what we did in this case, Alex and the, and the Hall family, we brought the project to the county, which still needs full county approval, but, um, we're actually going to the, um, to the county board tomorrow to, to similar, you know, similar process. They're gonna loan him the money to demolish the building. And so, uh, the tax increment financing will pay that loan back, and so the developer won't have out-of-pocket expense. So they're already spending several million dollars on the project. You know, another half million or six hundred thousand dollars in demolition costs complicates and, and creates a cash flow problem for the project. So county will lend him the money to tear down the building, we'll, uh, we'll collect the taxes, and then we'll redevelop, uh, we'll reimburse the developer so he can pay that loan back, so, essentially.
And will these be luxury apart, condos or?
Uh, I, I mean, I guess it depends on what your definition of, of luxury condos are. He probably would be happy to show you the, they, they did two, um, condos so far. No, those were done several years ago. I've toured them, and if you're interested, if any of councils interested, I could, could arrange to take you through them. They're pretty, they're pretty cool. I, I, I think the, I would consider them, I guess, luxury. Um, they're probably in the two to three hundred-plus thousand-dollar range. So that's, I would say for me, that would be.
Walk across.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, I wanted to add, I wanted to add something to your comments, all right? You know, since you guys have been doing this, we have not sold houses in the city of Saginaw worth two hundred thousand dollars until we started doing the Brownfield development with some of the projects, am I right?
Yeah, um, you know, as you can imagine, the, the housing market, and it's not just the city of Saginaw. Now, I digress a little bit. The housing market's crazy right now.
Right.
I mean, they're selling houses in the city of Saginaw for a hundred and, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in multiple offers, but, yeah, we, we have struggled, eh, you know, as a region, Michigan in general, the outward migration of, of population, young people specifically, uh, has created a, um, a real problem around housing. And I'm glad that potentially ARPA dollars, we can, we can take a look at some, some remedies to that. Um, but when you do a development like this and you're trying to, to sell homes like the Sheehan condo development or like these, you do need incentives to, to sort of help assist because, um, well, you know, Lori, we're looking at, um, the Huntington Bank Building, and, you know, the potential investment there and then the, the crash value at the end of the project is not even close to what they're gonna invest in the project. So definitely need, um, very, a lot, a lot of times, it's not just Brownfield, but a lot of different incentives to make the projects happen, for sure. Thank you.
Now, I was wondering, I miss you, John Millen. I wanted to Brownfield Commission, and you kept me informed on what was going on. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Do you need to take a vote or continue discussion?
Do we need to continue discussion?
I move to approve.
Okay, it's already on the floor. I'm getting ready to call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it.
You are now in miscellaneous business.
Do we have any miscellaneous business? I do. I, I need to really, I'm sorry, I didn't do it during my comments, but I need to do it publicly now. Um, working on that state-of-the-city address is really tedious, and I really wanna thank the staff 'cause you gave me all of that mouthful of information I had to remember and talk about. But I wanna thank you because what you gave me was so informative to those who really read my whole twenty-eight-page speech. Um, I condensed it into eight pages, I think it was. But I wanna do a special shout-out to Rachel, Matt, and Vicky 'cause they had to put up with me. And that was a job, just putting up with me, getting through this. So I truly wanna thank them and Tim for allowing them and Amy for helping, all of you. I just wanna thank everybody who played a part in making last Thursday a success and being over so I can rest. Thank you. Anybody else? I know that was inappropriate.
I just wanted to let the, uh, city council know and people in the audience to know that the, uh, Youth Development Corporation, uh, the nonprofit, has broken ground on the corner of Fourteenth and Burke to build their first home. They own all the, uh, lots that the Kingdom Builders had, twenty-eight lots, so hopefully, uh, within a few years, they have a house on every last one of those lots, so. I think this is a really good concept for the city of Saginaw and for our youth to be able to work on those houses. You know, people who, uh, used a, uh, some kids who used a, uh, butter knife more than they used a screwdriver, and now they'd be putting some nails and building homes. So that gotta help our youth, uh, feel a lot better about their confidence here in the city of Saginaw. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I would just like to say, uh, thank you publicly to, uh, our city manager, our chief police, and Officer Graves. There are things going on in the background at the Saginaw Police Department that are moving, think, moving us forward in a positive way. If you can think back to where we were a year ago, and now that these people are getting together upon the request of council at times and, uh, even from, uh, personnel, it's, conversations are happening and things are moving. Like the mayor said, it's a new season, so it's, it's very promising.
Anyway, it's catchy. It's catchy, you guys. It's catchy. It's a new season.
I do.
Yes, ma'am. You know what? They real talkative tonight.
Um, I'd like to make a motion. Um, so I move to draft a budget adjustment to transfer money from the general fund balance to cover training, development, travel, lodging, and meal for city council to attend MML conference.
Second.
It's, it's been moved and second. And it, for those who don't understand what she's saying, we have a training opportunity. The more training we get, the better we can serve you. We are over our budget, and so the office of the city manager, I don't know if it's coming out of his budget or what, but we need to make a motion to do this. Look, they looking, trying to figure out whose budget. I told y'all, we need more money. So that's what that motion is all about. Would you like to say something, sir?
It would come from fund balance.
It would come from fund balance?
Yeah, so we, we have been, I think, over, um, and Yolanda's looking at me 'cause I don't know if she knows about this, but we, we have been using city manager budget to pay for this.
Okay, I'm.
In the past, uh, probably the past couple of years, because we've been doing a lot more training. So I think probably Vicky contacted the mayor. We wanna, um, the city council budget to reflect that, um, training budget more accurately, so we would ask for a, a transfer from fund balance into that training to cover the rest of your year's training. And then we would probably be looking at the inner budget process to reflect what we've actually been spending.
And it pays off. We actually have city council people who have graduated from levels,[1766.81] some that will come out this March in Lansing at our state Capitol. Um, I'm at the limit, I can't do nothing else. So for for my, for my counterparts, I think Autumn has something coming up. I think she's about to the level one completion. And I know Bill Ostage is probably going to have two and three. So he'll have one more level to do and he is close. Reggie started, Michael should be working on his second. And my newcomers are on level one, but I think that if they go in and talk, they may be already at level one. Okay. There's a motion on the floor, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Autumn had to stand to correct, Autumn says she's on level two. She don't want me to cheat her, level two. Okay, I have level four. I've completed it all. Okay, with that, there's a, there's a motion on the floor, any more discussion? If no more discussion?
I'm sorry, I I just had a quick question, what would the amount be or are we going to set that at a later date?
Four thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Councilmen, if you're going to the thing, please sign up so that we can get in on the early bird and we can all be together. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ostash is absent, councilmember Flores?
No.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Balls?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Nay.
We have seven yes and one nay, your motion is approved.
Madam Clerk? I'm sorry, is there anyone else? Even I, I can do this one. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Been moved, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.